Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the December 8, 2020 City Council Meeting, and I will call the meeting to order and ask Claudia to do a roll call.
Counselor Drapkin?
Here.
Counselor Garvin?
Here.
Counselor Geary? Counselor Stassenz?
Here.
Counselor Peralta?
Here.
Counsel President Minkie?
Here.
And Mayor Hill?
Here. Our first item of business tonight would be comments from citizens, and I'd like to have any individual address the council that would like to on topics other than a matter in litigation, was I judicial land use matter, and I'll stop for a moment. And tonight, we are working on the UGV, and we've closed that public hearing on that, and so we would not take any testimony or comments this evening as it relates to the UGV. So I would tell anybody that was planning on doing that that we will not take comments on that because that is scheduled for this evening, a matter that's scheduled for public hearing at some future date. We will limit your comments to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you wish to speak, use the hand raise feature in Zoom to request to speak, and once your turn is, it comes up, then announce your name, and we will unmute your mic and send a chat, or you can do, send a chat directly to the city recorder Claudia, and she will announce you. So I will open up for comments from citizens this evening. Claudia, do we have any that you're aware of?
None, your mayor.
Okay. Then let's move on to our next item of business this evening, which is advice and informational information. And so we'll do reports from councillors on their committee and board assignments, and so I'll just start at the top. Wendy, would you like to go first?
I don't have anything to report, Mr. Mayor. I actually missed my last MURAC meeting, and so I would have to rely on anybody else who happened to attend. Our next one would be in January.
Okay, I can report on that during my opportunity. Zach?
Thank you. Landscape Review Committee logged on to help with Chair Stevenson and Jamie and the Mr. Mayor to review and interview some candidates, and you'll see that recommendation coming forward. McMinnville Community Media are in between meetings. MacPac gave me a break and moved the meeting to this Thursday instead of last week on the heels of our UGV time, and so we'll be having a meeting this Thursday instead of our normally first Thursday of the month, skedulily. The Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rules Advisory Committee, our second meeting, will be on the 16th of this month. First meeting was kind of a, it'll be really getting into the meat of it this time, I guess. The McMinnville Active Transportation Concept Planning is going to get started on the 10th, which I think is this week, Thursday, so that's kind of, kind of in between some stuff and getting some stuff going. So that's, that's all I got for my report.
Thank you, Zach. Kelly?
I only have a YCAP report tonight, and I'll try and make it fairly brief. Currently, there's an intensive search for a permanent finance director. They have four final candidates, and interviews are taking place this week. There'll be at least two interviews. They hope to have somebody by mid-January. Client Services, which I get a lot of questions on, over 300 households, including over 1,000 persons have received rent through YCAP's COVID rent relief program. This rental assistance was for households who could not pay rent due to the effects of COVID-19. A formal partnership was created with McMinnville First Baptist Clement Weather Shelter to provide funding for shelter manager, One FTE, and basic shelter supports to increase the capacity of winter shelter and increase locally available low-barrier shelter beds. The Client Services Department was officially approved for an Ameristops Vista placement to begin late February 2021. This Vista position will work to bolster volunteer support for crucial projects for unsheltered persons, including a mobile shower, which actually is ready to go, and low-barrier shelter volunteer supports. And just to give you an idea of what's been going on at YCAP this year, they have received in grants revenue $2 million, well, basically $2.5 million. They're up $1.3 million over last year. A lot of that is COVID-19 types of grants. And in donations throughout the community, it's $551,000. That's up $441,000 over the prior year. So it's pretty significant. And when you look at this, client assistance that's been given out is over $1.5 million, but personnel costs have remained remarkably low. They're somewhere around the $69,000 a month area. So they're doing it with very tight staffing.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's go to Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We also conducted interviews for, for the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force. I'm sorry, I should clarify. We conducted interviews, and you'll see there's a recommendation in your packet tonight to fill a committee position there. That committee as well has availability, as does the new DEI committee that is newly being formed, and I think, Mr. Mayor, did you say earlier today that the deadline on applications for that was extended through the end of December?
December 31st, yes.
December 31st. We, back in the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force, we continued the work that's being done regarding SROs or group living, and how that would be fitting into and allowable in the code. Again, we do oftentimes discharge smaller work groups to analyze different parts of our action plan, and at this point, that is still in work group. We've, we've visited, we've revisited the topic multiple times, but there's still a little bit more, there's still a few more questions to be answered. We also got an update from Champion Team and some of the changes and progress that's being made within their organization. And I am not sure, I think our, I believe our December meeting will happen as scheduled, and I will double-check with the, the planning department, but I don't see, it's, it's close to other holidays, but I don't see any specific reason that we wouldn't be able to go forward with our regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you, Remy. Let's go to Sal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real briefly, council governments has not met since our last meeting, but we did interview the three finalists for executive director and expect to be making a decision on that in the next week to 10 days. And additionally, we'll be appointing a new member of the executive board at the next meeting on December 15th. That's it.
Thank you, Sal. Adam?
We're due to meet Thursday, and we didn't have a meeting last month. And Airport Commission, we should have some recommendations to you for new airport commissioners. Our first meeting in January.
Thank you, Adam. I can report on MURAC. We met last Wednesday on the 2nd of December, and primarily, our meeting, 40, 45 minutes of it, we had the project, a discussion and a presentation from the CIRA team, which is the same group that helped us with the design work on Alpine Avenue, talking about our Third Street, our Third Street Streetscape Improvement Project, listening to some direction that they might have for us, taking input back from the committee, and then also, you know, starting that process of what it might look like and the phasing of that. We also appointed MDA Chair as a, Dave Reckless, as an ex-official member representing the MDA on our board, and then we did an update on the COVID recovery, the FASIA improvement grants, and kind of an update on where we sit from that perspective. So again, a good, a good discussion that evening. MWAAC last weekend, week was canceled, so we didn't have our discussion on regional transportation. Visit McMinnville will be tomorrow, and, and then just, I just wanted to give an update. Today, we had our Yamhill County Leadership Call, and we spent a good half of our time talking about Measure 10, and even though that doesn't, the measure doesn't affect us that much in the city, other than maybe some funding mechanisms that we may not participate in, but there was a great discussion about Measure 10 and the impact that's going to possibly have on the counties and on the state. And I would just, anyone that would like to get some good information on Measure 10 and the effect on our jurisdictions, to call in and view that piece of our, our call this morning. I have one other piece of information, as today, we were able to meet today and yesterday with 13 applicants for five opportunities on the Planning Commission. We've got some names coming to us later in our presentation this evening, but also representing McMinnville Water and Light, I have a commissioner appointment to run by the council, and so I would, I would recommend the appointment or the reappointment of Ed Gormley to the McMinnville Water and Light Commission. Ed has been on that commission on and off for probably well over 30 years now, and he has made application to, to continue for another four years. So I would need a motion to approve the commissioner appointment as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It's been, it's been brought to us by Remy and seconded by Wendy. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. This, this appointment then has been passed unanimously, and I will take that to the Water and Light Commission next Tuesday evening. With that being said, then, let's go to department heads, and Amanda, we'll start with you. You're the first on my screen. I know there's a lot of people out there.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Mike Biset, would, do you have anything for us this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing this evening. I will have a couple resolutions in a minute.
Great. Heather?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Okay. Kylie?
Just a brief update for you on the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. The application period has been extended, as you mentioned earlier. It's extended through January 3rd. That's a Sunday, so we'll still accept those through the weekend, and then I'll be pushing them out for evaluation throughout this time period. So people can expect to start seeing those within about a week. They come in in an email, so it's not a great format to share with everybody, so I'm putting those in a more readable format, so it's taken a second on that. We also, like all employers in Oregon, have new OSHA compliance rules related to COVID-19. I just wanted to thank our Safety Committee and all of our staff here at the city for, maybe, maybe they're not thrilled about the new rules, but following them and getting on board. It's been a bit of a change in how we've operated, and I really appreciate how everybody's just digging in and getting it done, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Kylie. Let's go to Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor. I have nothing to report. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's go to Jenny.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report.
Okay. Well, let's see. Anything from Claudia?
Nothing, Mayor.
And is Scott with you at the Civic Center, or is he on the line?
Nothing for the council tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the chief on chief, Lippert?
Mayor, he is not.
Okay. I don't know that I saw Matt on the call. Anyone that I've missed, other than Jeff? Let's go ahead.
I think Matt's in civic call if he has anything to report.
Oh. Matt, are you in civic call?
I am in quiet at the church house. Nothing.
Okay, good. You're sitting over in the corner. Okay, Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things real briefly. Rich will be following up with a report. He had to get down to Amity for their board meeting tonight, right after this. He'll be following up with an email report that gives you a status report on the apartment fire from last week and the circumstances of the folks who had to be relocated in ways that people can help if, if they're interested, but we'll get that out to you via email within the next day or two. I want to thank folks who have RSVP'd already for the virtual town and gown with the city and Lynnfield University this year, and for those who haven't yet, encourage you to do that. And then one final item, the Evergreen Air and Space Museum has been conducting listening sessions with a number of community stakeholders over the last couple of days. I got a chance to participate in one of those sessions today. They're going to continue those for a few weeks. They're working really hard to sort of restart the museum in a way that will really actively engage broadly and deeply in the community. They'll also be recruiting for a new executive director, John Rasmussen, who's been the executive director for a number of years, is retiring early in 2021. So I thought I would share that with the council and have nothing else to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Next item on the agenda this evening is our consent agenda, and is there any councillor that would request to have any item removed from the consent agenda and heard in its regular place on the agenda this evening? Seeing no hands, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
And a second? It's been moved by Sal and seconded by Remy. All in favor of approving the consent, this consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. The consent agenda this evening passes unanimously six to zero. That'll take us to our resolutions this evening. Our first resolution is Resolution 2020-66, a resolution for the proceeding and setting a date and time for the public hearing to vacate Southeast Chandler Avenue, east of Southeast Davis Street. And so we'll, and that's RV 1-20. Call on Community Development Director Mike Biset to present. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I would refer you to the brief staff report that's in your packet, as well as the associated proposed resolution and completed street vacation application materials. As the mayor noted, we have received a completed vacation petition related, related to the vacation, proposed vacation of Southeast Chandler Street, east of Southeast Davis Street. This is a citizen-initiated petition, and the petition was deemed complete, and the required signatures were provided as necessary. The staff report that was provided to you outlines the proposed schedule of the proceedings. Assuming the council adopts the resolution this evening, setting a hearing date of January 12th at 7:00 PM, the city will notify affected utilities and interested parties to receive feedback. We'll post notice of, of the proposed vacation onsite and twice in the news register, and then, as noted, the council will consider the matter at a public hearing on January 12th. Unless there are any questions, staff would recommend that you adopt the resolution as presented.
So we'll go ahead and ask, do we have any questions for Mike on this resolution? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-66.
So moved. Second.
Been moved by Remy and seconded by Wendy. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution 2020-66 passes unanimously six to zero. That takes us to the next resolution for consideration this evening, a resolution adopting the city of McMinnville's representation in the updates to the Yamhill County Multi-jurisdictional National Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, and we'll call on Mike to update us on that one also.
Once again, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I have provided a brief staff report in your packet, as well as volume and materials, probably not as much as the UGV stuff you've been seeing recently, but related to the natural hazard mitigation plan, and more particularly McMinnville's addendum to the county's plan. So just about a year ago, we joined Yamhill County's effort to update their plan. They'd engaged with University of Oregon's Institute for Policy Research and Engagement to update their plan. Previously, McMinnville did not have an addendum within Yamhill County's plan, and so several city staff and members of Water and Light engaged this time to develop an addendum to that plan, and by doing so, assuming the council adopts that addendum, it will open us up for potential grant funding related to hazard mitigation. So there were a number of city staff involved in this effort. We did post it and share it online and open it for public comment. Public comment received was scarce. I would point out to you, there is a lot of material in this plan. I think particularly the pertinent or interesting parts include the action items that are for the various hazards that are listed in table form within McMinnville's addendum. Those action items identify, you know, department leads to develop and work on those action items, potential partners, potential funding, and certainly timing of when those action items could be addressed. Sort of an ongoing and immediate or short-term, medium-term, and long-term list of efforts that the city and McMinnville Water and Light can undertake to, to start to address hazard, hazards, natural hazards within the community and the mitigation that will offset some of that. So I would note that McMinnville Water and Light adopted via resolution this addendum at their last, well, I'm not sure if it was their last, at their, at a November commission meeting.
It was their last one, Mike, yes.
And that, in your packet, you'll find that FEMA has reviewed this draft and has tentatively approved it based on the city council's adoption of the addendum. So unless there's any questions, I would recommend you adopt the resolution, adopt, formally adopting the natural hazard mitigation plan.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike?
Not a question, just a comment, and this is for you, Mr. Mayor. I know that if I recall, at a strategic planning session almost two years ago, you had prioritized this, so I just want to say I appreciate you making this a priority, and I appreciate staff getting it done, and I think it'll serve the city well.
I think so, too. Good information that was sent out, a lot of good work on that. Thank you, Sal. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, then, I will call for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-67.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Zach and seconded by Sal. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution 2020-67 passes unanimously six to zero. That takes us to our next resolution, which is Resolution 2020-70, a resolution appointing and reappointing members to various boards, committees, and commissions. And so Heather, if you could update us on this report, since many members of the council have been a part of the interviewing board, but Heather, would you take us through that?
Sure. So Mayor and city councillors, this is our annual resolution we do in December to appoint people to vacancies that come up on our boards and committees and commissions due to the fact that their terms are expiring at the end of the year. We go through a process of interviewing. We solicit applications in October, November by advertising it in the local media and social media, and then we conduct interviews with the mayor, council president, the chair of the committee, and the lead staff person for the committee. So what you have in front of you are the recommendations from those interview panels. We have one, one person we wanted to recommend for a position in the Affordable Housing Task Force that would represent business and finance. It's Lori Virgin. She is the CEO of Willamette Valley Medical Center, and has been coming to the meetings and participating, and is a great asset for that group. She came from, over from Providence and Newburgh, where they had done a lot of active projects for affordable housing issues there. We have two people to recommend for the Landscape Review Committee, Patty Sorenson and Carlton Davidson. And then for the Planning Commission, as the mayor indicated, we had 13 applicants for five positions. Three of them were positions that were, that termed out at this, at the end of this year, and two are resignations. One was a resignation for someone who had a conflict due to, a job conflict due to the COVID event, that her, that position had changed a little bit. And then the other one was a resignation due to relocation out of, out of the city. So those interviews took place over the last few days. A lot of great candidates in that candidate pool. I'm excited about this, and the interview panel is recommending five people to fill those positions. Lori Shonshay, who would be returning as a planning commissioner, Brian Randell, who is a principal planner in Ventura, California, and has retired here in McMinnville, and has a lot of great background that he can bring to the table. Sedoni Winfield, who is known to you, most of you, I'm assuming all of you, and has been on the planning commission before, and we're excited to have her back. She'll bring that sort of institutional knowledge with her, as well as we work through building on some of the programs. Dan Chutowski, I hope I said that right. He is a resident at McMinnville, has been for about 20 years, is raising his family here, and is an engineer, and excited to get involved. And then Silla McClellan, who owns Third Street Books and has been very involved in the downtown program, and is turning off of the MDA board and would like to get involved in planning at McMinnville, and so she would be representing Ward 3. That's the recommendations for you in the resolution. They all become effective January 1, and we will go through training for each, for each, for each person that's appointed prior to their next meeting in January.
Thank you, Heather, for presenting that to us. I would like just to take a moment to thank all of those that have put applications in for these opportunities. As, as Heather had indicated on the ones that she sat in, I think we had some of the best applicants and a larger number than we've seen for many, many years. And so it speaks highly to the volunteerism that we find in our community. We have a few individuals that are not coming back on to certain committees, and we thank them for their service and their, their desire to give to the community. And so with that being said, what I'd like to do at this point is request a motion to approve Resolution 2020-70.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Kelly and seconded. Was that Remy? Was that Remy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any, any, any in opposition, please signify by saying nay. Resolution 2020-70 passes unanimously, six to zero. This takes us to our ordinance this evening, and let me, this will be a second reading of ordinance 5098. We have, we have, have had three nights of public hearing for this topic. That was on December 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, with the first reading of the ordinance of 5098 on December 3rd. At this point, the council may disclose any contact anyone has had with a public hearing regarding ordinance number 5098. I would begin by disclosing that I've received an email from a citizen today. And, and I didn't read it in detail, but I did read this, and it primarily talked a little bit of, on the density issues. The communication was sent after the 12:00 PM Friday, December 24th deadline, and so it is not entered as a part of the record. I'd like to see if anyone else on the council has had any communication that was outside of the public hearing.
I also received an email after the deadline, did not read it once I realized what the contents were.
Thank you, Sal. Any other disclosure? And again, the communication that I received, I did not read it in detail, is not going to impact the ability for me to render a decision if that would be necessary. And I would think, Sal, the same for you?
Yes, I make the same statement.
Okay.
Mayor, just to clarify, if you read the article in the News Register, is that a reportable event or not?
We'll ask Spencer or Amanda to address that.
If it's, if you read the article, there's, you don't need to disclose that. If you, we would ask that if you talked with any of the reporter, with the reporter that to contribute to that article, that you disclose that.
So let's open that up for disclosure. Anyone have opportunity to talk to the News Register about our public hearing and the UGB that's before us?
They did reach out, but I did not talk to them.
Thank you, Adam. Any others? Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we are, and, and again, so we've, we've had no, we've not had to disclose any ex parte communication other than that which we've already disclosed. So at this point, I'd like to call on--
Mayor, before you get to that, can you provide the public an opportunity to rebut the substance of the ex parte communications that were discussed?
Thank you. So is there anyone in the public that would like to, let me find where I'm at, any person that wishes to rebut the substance of any of these communications? And if you are, you might use the communicate button, and Claudia would be able to recognize Seeing none?
I don't see anyone, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Claudia. So I will now call on the Planning Director, Heather Richards, to present. Go ahead, Heather.
Yeah, so good evening, Mayor and city councilors. I was going to come into this evening without a presentation. However, after visiting with legal counsel, there have been some activities since your last meeting on December 3rd, and so I wanted to bring that to your attention. It is in the staff report, but I know there's a lot of people on the line who have been watching the progress of this discussion, and we want to make sure they're aware of some of what has occurred as well. So I will share my screen with you. This will probably be my only presentation for this whole project that will be under 20 minutes, so this will be great.
All your presentations are great.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you. I do get teased about the time, though.
No, I still think it's the chief that gets the, gets teased for his PowerPoints.
So as you know, you, you held the record open. Oops, I just lost my, there we go. Just a reminder, what the ordinance does, it adopts a plan document, and the plan document talks about what the intention of the City of McMinnville is for growth, management, and urbanization. It adds land to the urban growth boundary, and that's our, our land, a pipeline of land to grow into that can get annexed into the city as, as need occurs and property owners want to annex into the city. It assigns comprehensive plan designations to the land that's in the UGB, so it's not rezoning that land, it's applying comprehensive plan designations, and the land remains under county zoning. It adopts and/or amends selected comprehensive plan goals, policies, and proposals, and amends Section 17 of the McMinnville Municipal Code, which we call the zoning ordinance. So since your meeting on December 3rd, where you closed the public hearing, you did keep the written record open to December 4th, 2020, by, for, to noon, so 12 o'clock on that day. We did receive four communications Friday morning, and so I wanted to enter those in the record. They have been sent to city council, they were sent to city council on the afternoon of December 4th. Then what we need to do is, based on the public testimony heard, we draft findings for you as city council for that public testimony, so we spent all weekend doing that, and drafted the findings for it, and provided those to you. And then we also have provided you some proposed amendments based on the public testimony, and that's what I wanted to walk through fairly quickly. So in the findings document, we added Chapter 8. 8 is the public testimony. So in that chapter, we outlined who testified by providing written testimony, who testified by providing oral testimony. We identified what we saw as the larger issues that we, that we were hearing in the testimony, and then findings relative to those. And we sent those to you yesterday on December 7th. Today, we reread, we went through everything again to make sure, all the public testimony, make sure we're capturing everything. We did find two that we wanted to add to it as additional issues and findings for that, and we sent that to you this evening, and I wanted to go through that a little bit. There was some testimony that was concerned that the, that the proposed zoning ordinance amendment in Appendix E, which has language in it for Section 17.21 that allows high-density residential housing on local collector streets that are 600 feet from an intersection with a major arterial or major collector. There was a concern that R5 zone land was going to be allowed on local collector streets, and R5 zone land is a very high-density zone. However, Section 17.21 is R4 zone and not R5 zone, so that, that's an allowance for the R4 zone. Our, the R5 zone is a new chapter, new section of the chapter, which is 17.22, so I think there was a misunderstanding there. And then there was also a letter to city council from the owners of tax lot 00200, asking why their property was not included in the UGB recommendation. And that tax lot is part of what we called our study area, NW-EX1B. We divided that study area up into three subparts because it was so different in terms of the study area itself, and provided findings for each of those three subparts, too. You can find those in Appendix C, pages C186 to C204. And the particular tax lot that's in question, North, what we call Northwest-EX1B-R2, rated poorly for factor 3, 5, and 7, and it rated poorly for those factors due to the fact that there was high landslide soils on the property, that there was, also the property was considered critical habitat for wildlife, and that there was also Class 2 and Class 1 soils on the property. We did come to you with some proposed amendments based on the public testimony. Two of them, you have already put into your first motion and turned, with your first reading. And one was to rewrite the Comprehensive Plan Policy Number 86. This was a comprehensive, comprehensive plan policy that was drafted in 2003 as part of the original plan, but it was confusing as to what the intention of it was. The intention is that multifamily housing will be dispersed throughout the community, and the highest-density housing would be encouraged in the neighborhood activity centers as well as the downtown and around Lynnfield University, where we feel the infrastructure can support it the best. Based on the first night's discussion at the public hearing, we came back with new language for that on the second night of the public hearing for you to clarify that, and that is a recommendation. And then there was also some confusion about, oh, this came up in the discussion of the 600-feet discussion for the R4 zone of location factors for that that are in the zoning ordinance proposal but did not make it into the comp plan policy amendment. And so after looking at that, we came back with a recommendation to say, to be able to adopt that zoning ordinance amendment that allows R4 zoning on a local collector within 600 feet of a major collector or arterial street, we need to have in the comp plan policy as well. So we were recommending that underlying language be part of the comp plan policy. And then we are recommending that Number 6 of this policy be deleted, which is a buffer, which is areas that can be buffered from low-density residential areas is where you should locate your higher-density housing, and that is in conflict with the Great Neighborhood Principles that were recently adopted by the city in 2019. We're also recommending two additional amendments. These are based on the discussion that came up on the last night of the public hearing on Thursday night, December 3rd, where you had a Thousand Friends, Alexis Biddle from Thousand Friends testified about what was written in, in the plan document itself. The original language in the plan document stated that the R5 zone was limited to just the neighborhood activity centers. And we had written on the following page as an update for the 2020 effort that we felt that the R5 zone should be dispersed throughout the community based on locational factors, as that's what was described in the original comp plan policy that was written for the R5 zone, and we felt it was in conflict with that. However, it was clear after hearing the testimony that our language on page 54 wasn't clear, and so we wanted to clarify that even more so that it, so that moving forward, what the language in the plan could be used against the R5 zone being applied to other property. There is a comp plan policy that has locational factors associated with it that would identify where the best places in the city to locate the R5 zone, but it went, it went limited just to the neighborhood activity center. So we did add language, we changed that language to clarify that discussion. And then based on city council direction, we had prepared a tech memo for you to respond to the discussion of whether or not this program was meeting the needed housing type for apartment units, that the R5 zone is a tool to help the city achieve. And so we need to enter that technical memorandum into the documents as well, so we're recommending to add that to it as well. That would be adding that technical memorandum to Attachment 2 of Appendix C. So those are our four proposed amendments. You voted on the top two the night of December 3rd, and we're bringing the bottom two to you as recommendations for this evening to include as well. And that constitutes my presentation.
Thank you, Heather. As the city council members might recall, the ordinance did not have unanimous support at the, at the December 3rd meeting, requiring a second reading to be conducted at a separate meeting. Unless any member requests otherwise, I would ask the city attorney to read the ordinance by title only. Amanda?
I'm reading myself. This is the second reading of ordinance number 5098. I grabbed the language, sorry. An ordinance adopting certain amendments to the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan Map, Comprehensive Plan, and McMinnville Municipal Code, Chapter 17, approving the McMinnville Growth Management and Urbanization Plan and its appendices, and adding land supply to McMinnville's urban growth boundary.
Thank you, Amanda. We now have time for discussion and deliberation on the part of the city council for this ordinance. Anyone like to bring anything from the council to light in our discussion portion? Hearing none, then I would ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5098.
So moved.
And, and Mayor, can I actually ask Councilor Stossens to look at the language--
Yes.
--on page 26 of the staff report? It's page 759 of your packet. It has specific language about what you're adopting, and also the consideration of the findings as distributed to council today.
Okay. Go ahead, Wendy, if you'd read that as a motion.
Hold on a second, page--
It's 759 of the packet.
768, okay, hold on a second, I just have to go up a few pages here. Okay.
Okay, so I move that based on the findings of fact, the conclusionary findings for approval and the materials included in the record, I move to adopt ordinance number 5098, including the recommended amendments provided in the December 8th, 2020 staff report.
Thank you.
And the, and the findings as distributed--
I'm sorry. In the findings what?
As distributed today.
As distributed today. Thank you.
Second. Thank you, Wendy. And then Sal has seconded that. So I will ask the city recorder to poll the council. Claudia?
Counselor Drapkin?
Aye.
Counselor Garben?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Stassenz?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
And Council President Minke?
Aye.
After the roll call, ordinance number 5098 is adopted by a vote of four to two. And so these is, this is a decision of the McMinnville City Council, and it is a final discussion of the, decision of the City of McMinnville. This proposal will now be sent to the Department of Land Conservation and Development for review and approval. Notice of this decision will be sent to everyone who testified in the public hearing. If anyone wants to object to this decision of the city council, they will need to send their written objection to the Director of the Department of Land Conservation and Development within 21 days of the date of the notice of this decision. The written objection should state what the objector thinks is not compliant with the state or local government regulations, and what is a solution, what a solution would be to make it compliant. The Director of the Department of Land Conservation and Development then would decide whether or not to render a decision or to send the decision to the Land Conservation Development Committee. If the objector does not agree with the decision of the Director of the Department of Land Conservation and, and Development, they can appeal the Director's decision to the Land Conservation and Development Commission. At this point, I would like to thank Heather and her department and employees for their heavy lifting and, and working long hours to get us to this point. If you'd let your team know, we appreciate them. Specifically Spencer, it's been great working with you and the legal support that you've given us through this process, and specifically DJ coming out of retirement to, to bring his expertises to the table. And with that, I now adjourn the city council at 7:52 PM. Thank you all.
Full mask, Amanda.